auditorium of the Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNH.gov/AgendaCenter. Select zoning board of adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call (603) 589-3056, and they will help you connect in the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above. The meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The board follows the meeting protocols and procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the board. Next persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again. Before the board deliberates and determines an outcome, a timer is used to manage speaking time. Kate Poirier, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under reactions on a computer or the more menu on a phone. The chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your questions or comments. Please mute your microphone until called on to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined and the application will be summarized in board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be made, though they are different from those for special exceptions. Per the city of Nashua bylaws and state of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the city of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full board members in attendance. We have Mr. Steve Lionel, the vice chair, Mr. Jack Carrier, the clerk, Mr. J.P. Shaw, and Mr. Rob Shaw, and myself, Marielle McKay, as chair. We also have the following alternate members in attendance: Mr. Jay Minkara and Mr. Josh Neely. In addition to the board members, we also have here with us Mr. Carter Falk, the deputy planning manager, and Ms. Kate Poirier, the zoning coordinator. We'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. There is no board member on Zoom this evening. So also, alternates may fully participate in the discussions, but will vote only if a full board member recuses themselves or there are fewer than five board members in attendance. Mr. Steve Lionel. Mr. Jack Carrier.
Present.
Mr. J.P. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Rob Shaw.
Present.
Mr. Jay Minkara.
Present.
Mr. Josh Neely.
Present.
And myself, Marielle McKay. I'm also present. And we will now start with the first case. Whoops. Oh. Also, Mr. Carter Falk. You're present, and Ms. Poirier, you're also present. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to our agenda this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's one change. There was a case advertised at 46 Cox Street, the O'Quarry family. That case will not be heard tonight. It's going to be withdrawn and re-advertised and will be coming back at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Case number one is 46 Ross Street. 48 Ross Street, Marcelo S. Gouveia, owner. Sheet 95, Lot 14, requesting the following: Special exception from land use code Section 190-15, Table 15-1. Number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the basement. And two, variance from land use code Section 190-32B1 to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit. 750 square feet allowed, 920 square feet proposed. This is in the RB zone Ward 6. This was postponed from our March 14 meeting, which was canceled due to weather. Is there somebody present?
Yes, we're on Zoom.
Okay. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Tiago. I'm here in Marcelo. He doesn't speak English very well, so I'll be translating for him. It's 48 Ross Street in Nashua, New Hampshire, Lot 3060. And his name is Marcelo Gouveia.
Thank you. You now have the floor. You may present your case.
Okay, so Marcelo plans on building an in-law apartment unit on his basement. And due to the way that things are going to be built, he has like a utility room there. And the whole basement square foot is around 920 square feet. And we know that the maximum is 750. But just the way the basement is set up, the best use of it will be like we were able to create the whole, you know, use the whole basement for a plan so we don't lose any space.
Is there anything else you have that you would like to present to this board?
No, we don't have anything else to say.
Did you want to address any of the points that are here? And also, the special exception, the accessory dwelling unit covenants? Oh. That's right, they put it in the thing now. Okay. Sorry, I didn't see. You did sign that. I forgot. We have changed up what we're doing. So you did already accede to those. Is there anything else in the points that you wanted to express to this board?
Yeah, he just wanted to ask for the permission, you know, so that he can use the space for his in-laws. But he has nothing else to add.
Thank you. Does anyone? Mr. Shaw.
One question. Is the utility room being used as some kind of living space? Or is that actually more for things like furnace and other things, and it wouldn't be considered living space?
Yeah, the utility room is just where he has like, he has a filter. That's where his water heater is. His heater, it won't be used for any living space. It'll just be, you know, a separate space for the heater, AC units, and things like that.
Okay. So can I ask a question to staff?
Certainly, Mr. Shaw.
So it would seem we wouldn't normally keep that in the calculations, would we? For this, so that...
We would take that out.
So it looks like the 920 includes that based on my rough, just trying to add up the dimensions here and multiply it out. So I think, I didn't try, I didn't actually try to take the square footage from, I guess that looks like it's 64 square feet, so.
856.
Okay, yeah, so it looks like...
We didn't take that out.
Yeah, all right. And just for the applicant, that we're just, what I was trying to follow up on is that it looks like you applied for the 920. It wouldn't necessarily be the way we would normally calculate this. So it appears you really only need to ask for 856 square feet as the request. So just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Minkara was first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure.
If I could just ask a question of the applicant. Is there an interior staircase connecting the main floor to the basement?
Yes, there is an interior staircase, yep.
And that would remain?
Yes, that will remain.
Okay. And that's the way I assume that the resident of the main floor would access the utility room?
Well, there's also an exterior stairways as well.
Right.
But yes, it would be, there's two entrance ways. There's one through the main house and there's one through the exterior.
Okay. I asked because I didn't see it on the drawing.
Thank you.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Minkara, have my question.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lionel, then Mr. Carrier.
I noticed when I did my drive-by that there is a second driveway around the corner. Does Marcelo, did he get a variance granted for that?
I don't know. That was, that was already there, I think, when he moved in. There was already a second driveway. That wasn't something he did now. Or I think it was back in, let me just ask him to make sure for you. It depends on the driveway. Ali já era uma coisa de, tinha um asfaltinho já. E você só pôs um asfalto no outro, né? Isso, já tava lá carregando, tudo esquebrado. So when he moved into the house, there was already asphalt there. He just redid with new asphalt. But it was already there when he moved to the house.
Okay, just a comment that he should apply for a variance for that.
Okay.
Not tonight, obviously, but.
Mr. Carrier.
The question I have is, on the application, it talks about a proposed, I don't know if it's a proposed second entrance way or enlarging the window, but what is the plan behind the note that says proposed second entrance way here? Something like that.
So the window is just for, we assume that's what the fire marshal wants us to do? To be like another, like, fire exit?
Okay, so whatever, because if this were approved, that second unit in the basement would have to meet whatever the fire standards are, which I can't quote as I sit here. But my thought was that's what that note was referring to, was that whatever is needed per code, that basement unit, if it were approved, would meet that.
Yes.
Okay, that's the only question I had.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
Just to clarify, follow up Ms. Lionel's question. When did the applicant purchase the house? Just curious, approximately?
Between 2014 and 15.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's no further questions? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? I have two emails that I am going to read into the record. "I am writing in regards to the hearing and request that is being made for 48 Ross Street in-law apartment in the basement. At this time, we do not feel that this addition would be good for the neighborhood. Traffic, trash, noise, business or businesses are already being run out of this house. Home truly impact. Parking, vehicles coming and going, very small corner lot. Traffic already coming around the corner has already seen near miss of accidents. Very small ranch home, sewer and water systems will be overloaded. Next-door neighbors, George and Nancy Goodwin, 44 Ross Street, Nashua, New Hampshire." The second email. "I am responding to the notice for a special exception and variance to build an in-law apartment in the basement of 48 Ross Street. The owners are presently running a business out of this home. Add to that the additional traffic noise, trash, parking, et cetera, that this unit would bring. Will there be an easily accessible outside emergency exit for this family? I'm concerned about safety and upkeep for this home and neighborhood and don't agree that adding said in-law apartment would be a good idea. Karen Mark, 243 Ross Street, Nashua, New Hampshire." At this point, would the applicant like to respond to the comments that were just read into the record?
Well, so we'd just like to talk about the business. We don't run a business out of the house. We have a cleaning business, but we don't keep any equipment here. Just our car, his car has the company name, and it's a small cleaning, family-owned business. There's no other business being run through this place. So we don't have any coming and going like they're saying. I mean, I have two teenagers. That's why we have more cars in the house. My son drives, and I have, we have three cars only, my wife's car, my car, and my son's car. So I don't know where these people got this, you know, that we have running business in the house. That's all.
Thank you. I have a question now, staff. Mr. Falk, did you see this complaint details report? I don't need if that, I don't know if that should go into the record as well.
It should.
It should? Thank you. We also have a complaint report, location 48 Ross Street. List the complaint number, 21-0437. Complaint date, June 22, 2021. Complaint status, closed. Inspector Lawrence Phillips. The complaint type was a code. Owner name, Marcelo S. Gouveia. Complaint description, my neighbor, 48 Ross Street, has had trash in front of his house for the past three weeks. It is not in the city trash container. It is a large piece of outside storage. The neighbors are tired of looking at his trash that he puts in front of his house. Is there anything that can be done about it? Anyway, we can't stop him from putting trash in front of his home. We would like to keep the neighbor and streets clean. I know we haul our oversized items to the landfill, or we can call you guys to pick up a large item." That, since Mr. Gouveia, this has been closed, I'm going to assume that this was, situation was rectified. But we needed to put it in the record and address it with you in the interest of openness and transparency.
Madam Chair, I think, again, my opinion is that was brought up, the applicant should at least, even though it's been two years, it closed, should at least have the opportunity to respond to it.
Yes, I agree. That's, no, that's why I was asking. I completely agree with that. And that's why I asked, is this closed? Was it rectified? And I'm speaking to Mr. Gouveia.
Can you repeat the date again, please?
The date was June 22, 2021, almost two years ago.
Okay. That was probably when we were doing some, he was doing some renovations to his backyard and clean up of his landscaping. He had some debris on the front yard, but that was in, that was just for, you know, a week or so. And then the people removed the trash.
Okay, thank you. I just needed to read it in, and we also needed to hear your response. So thank you very much for that, the clarification. Mr. Carrier.
I had a question, follow-up question for the applicant.
Certainly.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that your testimony was the driveway hasn't been expanded since Mr. Gouveia purchased it in 2014. I just wanted to make sure that that's your testimony.
Let me just translate to him. It depends on the driveway. Você não estendeu, já tava coisa. Você só pôs asfalto no outro. O cara foi lá, ele fez tudo pra mim, resolveu tudo. Eu falei assim, posso ir lá, converso com eles lá e tudo. Yeah, so again, he said that when he moved into the house, they already have the space there, and he just added the new asphalt.
If you could just clarify for me, when you say, you first said, when the question was first said, that there was asphalt there, and so there was no new asphalt. But what I just heard was that there was space there.
No, no, there was already, there was already like a parking there. But it was like all broken up, and then he had, he added the new asphalt to it.
Okay, so was it a lawn that was being parked on? Or was it an asphalt?
No, it wasn't a lawn. It was like, it was like a thin layer of asphalt.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. I'm all set.
Any further questions? Seeing done, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
I think that on the whole, I would approve this application. We've had, clearly, there have been some concerns by neighbors. The applicant and his representatives state that some of the accusations are not correct, and other issues have been resolved. So I don't, can't really think of a good reason to deny it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in favor of the application solely. Again, I think we've seen some applications where these are basements that are being converted. It really doesn't make sense to carve out another, what is it, 106 square feet just to meet the code. I think we realize now with the utility room, it's really less than what was advertised, the actual space being used. So again, I think he's followed all the criteria for a dwelling unit. I think that the other issues, the driveway and such, I think are important, but not germane to this particular case because I don't think it would affect whether there was a driveway there or not, whether or not I would be in favor of the application. And so therefore, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
I also support the application. I agree the other issues that I've raised are ancillary issues. And I think, as we've noted, the square footage overage is actually less. There really is no other good way to do it, given the location of the utility room being located in basically the middle of the basement. And I'd also just add that, to some extent, whoever resides in the accessory dwelling unit isn't going to fully have exclusive use because inevitably, the owner is going to have to access that utility room, and they're going to come right through that unit to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Neely.
Originally, I had concerns about this application based on the square footage and not wanting to basically make a ranch house and a ranch set up into a two-family house. However, you know, after listening to the testimony today, I agree, once we subtract out the square footage, there's no other way to move this around to make this worth it. So adding, you know, an extra 100 square feet on top of the normal square footage really is not egregious. So I would be in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I don't think I have anything to add. I think the key arguments have already been made, and I'm in support of this.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier.
Overall, I'm in support for the arguments that have been made about a ranch house. And, you know, it's reasonable to have, in this case, the basement as a unit versus walling off a little bit more to meet the 750 square feet. I actually, with my site walk and some contemplation on the case, I was hung on the issue of the driveway. And the reason is because initially, not hearing the testimony now, and I was stuck on that because, to me, the second driveway was a fresh driveway. So I said, well, it looks like a new driveway to me. And my icrometer said it's well more than 24 feet. And one of the criteria that a property has to show for a special exception is that you can have one additional parking space. And I thought, well, wait a minute. Would a homeowner put in an illegal driveway that requires a variance because maybe it's needed for a second, you know, second occupancy, and then come to the board and say, you know, I meet all the criteria? That's a no-go for me. But with the testimony that there was a driveway, and I just want to make it clear, my support for this is based on there was a driveway there prior to this owner buying it in 2014. And that definition is, okay, maybe it was a thin and old and broken-up asphalt driveway, but that's a driveway. But that's not like a lawn that somebody's been parking on. That's not a driveway. So with the testimony from the applicant that it was an asphalt driveway from before he owned it, I find support for this application.
Thank you. And I too am in support of the application for all the aforementioned reasons. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I think we always go through the, and I can never remember whether we should do the variance first or the special, special exception first. Okay, I'm getting a head nod from staff. We'll do the special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Marcelo S. Gouveia, at 48 Ross Street, Sheet 95, Lot 14, for a special exception from land use code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in basement. This is listed in the table of uses, as just noted. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. It will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or other municipal system. All special regulations are fulfilled by testimony with the notation that there is an overage request for the square footage that will be addressed through a variance request here. And it will not impair integrity beyond a carryout. And it will not impair integrity, be out of character with the neighborhood, be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. For those reasons, I move to approve this special exception.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. That is five to nothing. Um, Mr. Shaw, did you want to continue?
Certainly. Uh, again, uh, for the applicant and owner, Marcelo Escovea, forty eight Ross Street, uh, requesting a variance, uh, from Land Use Code, section one ninety dash thirty-two, B one, to exceed the maximum size of the accessory dwelling unit, uh, seven hundred and fifty square feet allowed. Um, the advertised was nine hundred and twenty square feet proposed, as noted through, uh, testimony. Eight hundred and fifty-six square feet is the appropriate calculation. Uh, this is in the RB zone. Uh, the area variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Benefit cannot, uh, sought cannot, by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method, uh, method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The key notation here is that this is to, uh, finish off a basement of this home, and that the, um, to, the area required to meet the, uh, without having to do the area variance, uh, would be just a little over a hundred square feet. Uh, that seems to be no reasonable benefit, uh, to not have the applicant be able to use that part of the dwelling, uh, just to meet this, uh, criteria. So, therefore, it's also within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Uh, there's no, uh, testimony that there to be any, uh, adverse effect on property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest, and the substantial justice would be served. Uh, so therefore, I move to approve this area variance.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Um, congratulations, Mr. Gouveia. Both your special exception and your variance have been granted. As with any decision made by this board, any member of the public has the right to appeal any decision. They have thirty days with which to do so. Uh, should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer those back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department. Again, thank you for your presentation this evening, and congratulations on your special exception and your variance being granted. Now, I will read case number two. Ronald P. Anastel G., Houdin, owners. La Favor Folio LLC, applicant one one five Lock Street, sheet forty-one, lot twenty-one, requesting use variance from Land Use Code, section one nine zero dash one five, table one five dash one, number fifteen, to remove existing building and construct one eight-unit multifamily building along with associated site improvements. This is in the GI zone, Ward Three. Um, this was also postponed from the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting due to weather. Um, Attorney Pearlman I C U. At the podium, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney with Prunier and Pearlman here in Nashua, um, and I am here on behalf of La Favor Folio, limited liability company, uh, who is seeking to, uh, build out, uh, up to eight, uh, townhouse units on this site. Uh, with me tonight is Tom Zajak from Hayner Swanson, the project engineer, um, and Aziz Azam, um, here on behalf of La Favor Folio. Um, and as I mentioned, Madam Chair, uh, we are seeking, um, a use variance um, to allow up to eight, uh, townhouse units at one fifteen Lock Street. Um, this is a pretty straightforward variance in our requests, uh, requesting for residential use in the general industrial district. Uh, La Favor Folio is the same applicant who was here before you, um, two years ago, in May, two thousand and nineteen, with my, with our friend Jerry Prunier, um, who, uh, developed the one thirteen, and, excuse me, one eleven to one thirteen Lock Street. Uh, very similar case in that a use variance was required for that. Um, eighteen units were approved for one thirteen and, uh, one eleven and one thirteen Lock Street. Uh, ten of those units have been built. Um, eight are currently under construction, uh, fully up and framed, and those will be coming online for sale probably the next few months. Um, it turns out, it's a very successful project. Um, before I get into our variance criteria, I just want the board to, uh, just consider two, two factors, um, when looking at this, um, at, at this site. Um, I'm not sure if you can go to the, kind of, the overview? Or the, uh, like the GIS? The, um, this area is, um, Zone General Industrial. The General Industrial District is, uh, leftover from, from years ago when there was, uh, in, in industry in this area. The General Industrial District runs, um, runs from Lock Street, um, down to, um, uh, um, I'm drawing it like, to Bridge Street, to East Hall Street, and all goes all the way down to Crown. So, this whole area, um, has General Industrial, except my first point is that this particular section of the General Industrial is really cut off by the Nashua River. You know, I, I would say things south of the Nashua River in this area would be appropriate for General Industrial. Directly across the river from us, you have the PSN H substation, then you have BAE, and then you have, um, all kinds of businesses going to Newport Construction, and then the Henry Hanger Building, and all the, all these things, and the, in the General Industrial District. But north of the Nashua River, um, it's all residential, uh, essentially. Um, and that, which is my second point that I want you to consider. So, north of the Nashua River in this area, we have three, um, uses that are not residential. Um, you have the BAE parking lot. You have the Heritage Baptist Church, which used to be the Guy Rochambeau Hall. Um, and you have the, uh, Swim and Tennis Center. I don't know what it's called now. It used to be the Nashville Swim and Tennis Center. Um, and, but other than that, all the resi, all the uses in this area of Lock Street, Atherton Ave are all residential, um, and it's a healthy mix of multifamily and single family. Um, and I would even suggest that the three, um, non-residential uses are really not general industrial-type uses. They're more, um, it's a parking lot, it's a church, a swim and tennis center. You know, we don't typ- typically think of that as, those as, uh, general industrial. Um, so, with those two comments, um, and, and, before I get into my, the variance criteria, um, what, Mr. Falk, in his staff memo, he had a summary of the comparable density, uh, in the area. And so what we're proposing, um, for the up to eight units, and I'll come back to that, um, is comparable to the area. Uh, there's a multi, there's a multifamily townhouse project, um, just up, um, Atherton Avenue. You have the, uh, buildings right next to us at one thirteen, uh, one eleven, one thirteen. Um, ninety-five, um, uh, ninety-five Lock Street, also built out by, um, uh, La Favor Folio, right at the top of the, um, the five units, right at the top of the, uh, BAE parking lot, um, on a very tight lot. So, what we're proposing, um, fits with the area. Further down Lock Street, there's a large apartment, um, building, um, that, um, you know, similar type of density to what we have here. Uh, my final comment, uh, before the variance, uh, matters, uh, is that what you have before you, um, is a preliminary plan. Um, we submitted this plan seeking, uh, permission up to eight units. Um, Tom Zajak and the Hayner Swanson team, they have some more engineering to do, and it may be that we only get six units on this site. Maybe we get s- seven units, or maybe eight. My point in saying this is, you see on the plan, we have, uh, an encroachment into the buffer off of, uh, the Nashua River. Um, and if it turns out that we, um, are able to get eight units on the site, and we have to work with the city, uh, with Concom, and a special exception, then, you know, we'll be back, you know, as, as necessary. But it, if it turns out that we can only get six units, then that enables us to pull back, um, some parking and any encroachment into the buffer. So, it's a preliminary plan that you have before you tonight. And if you have questions on that, uh, Tom Zajak can answer, um, any specifics on the, on the layout of the lot, uh, and how it works. And so with that, Madam Chair, um, I have the variance criteria, um, and you have our application before you. I'm not going to read it verbatim, um, but we don't believe this variance would be contrary to the public interest, in large part because what we're proposing um, is, uh, similar, if not the same, as the character of the neighborhood, um, all around us. Um, this area, um, in this general industrial district in Lock Street has been changing over time, um, and so currently, it's really a residential, um, area, and not so much general industrial. Uh, we believe we're meeting the spirit of the ordinance, again, because we don't have any impact on the health, public, uh, the safety, uh, welfare of the public health, um, and we are, um, in compliance with the character of the neighborhood. Uh, we believe substantial justice will be done, because the property, um, will develop, uh, as developed, will generate much-needed housing stock for the city. The housing stock, um, will be, I, I can't use the term affordable, because that's a legal term of art, but these will not be super-expensive homes. These are coming in, uh, in the three hundred thousand dollar range. They're not going to be multimillion-dollar units. Uh, it's a housing stock that's much-needed. Uh, the owner benefits, the applicant benefits, without any adverse, um, impact to the community at whole. Uh, we don't see that any property values will be, um, harmed with this proposal. Again, we have the need for housing. We have new construction being proposed, the new construction right next door. Uh, we have a very similar, if not identical, um, layout, um, and style and construction quality. Um, so we, we don't see that there's any, um, impact to property values. Um, and finally, with respect to the hardship, uh, the neighborhood has changed greatly over the past, um, thirty years. The industrial zoning, um, really shouldn't apply just because the natural cutoff of the Nashua River provides to, uh, this Lock Street area, and we see no fair and substantial reason to prohibit the proposed use. And given how the area has been built out, it was, is all residential. We believe we have a reasonable use of the property. So, with that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or turn it over to, uh, Mrs. Zajak, Zajak, to answer anything specific as to the plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? No questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom? Who would like to speak in favor of this application? I don't see anyone. Kate, do you? Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, and members of the board. My name's Brian Major. I'm an attorney in Nashua. I have an address at nineteen Technology Way. I've got some photos here my client took, if I could distribute those. I think I'll come back this moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm here today, I represent Smart Investments LLC, the owner of the property located at one nineteen Lock Street, which isn't a budding property. It doesn't abut on the street side, but as you can see from your, from your plot plan, uh, toward the back, perhaps three-quarters of the, uh, length of my client's border to the west side of his parcel, uh, but directly butts the effective property. Uh, I'm here also with Dwayne Smith, uh, who, he and his wife Angela Smith own, own basically Smart Investments LLC. One nineteen Lock Street consists of a sixteen-unit building, which was constructed in about nineteen seventy-six. My clients owned it for about twenty-five years. It consists of a forty-two thousand, five hundred square foot lot. Uh, and if you break it down, basically, uh, his, the density on his lot is approximately two thousand, six hundred and fifty-six square feet per unit. He has about thirty-four parking spaces. He's got about twenty-five thousand square feet of the lot, which is consumed by the building, and the parking lot leaving him with about forty-one percent green space. As I've stated, he's owned this for twenty-five years. He's a good landlord, uh, he's got below-market rentals on all of the units right now. Uh, his tenants are good, but he's constantly having to, uh, show up at the site and enforce parking problems. He'd tell you basically, he's got a parking problem, uh, even with the thirty-four units he has. It's a constant problem. Uh, the property consists, I've shown you some photos of the land and buildings. The li, the land consists of a beautiful lot, a, a beautiful play area for the children, which is located to the west side of his lot, directly abutting the subject premises. Uh, basically, he'd have you know, about ten years ago, one of his tenants has to have a wedding there. They had a beautiful wedding out in the field. It's where the kids play, it's where everyone, uh, in, that lives at one nineteen Lock Street has use of. It's a communal play, play area for everyone there. Um, I tell you this because I think you need to compare his proposal, his present use to the proposed use of the premises. Uh, we agree with the applicant that there's no, there's no point in adhering to the GI requirements at this, in this particular lot. It's clearly residential. All the surrounding properties are residential, we agree. We've also reused Mr. Falk's, uh, planning memo, and he points out, he doesn't take a position, obviously, but he points out basically that if you apply the RC zone requirements, which are the requirements across the street on the north, on the, the north side of Lock Street, uh, there's a, there's a maximum requirement of three thousand, four hundred and eighty-four square feet, uh, per unit. Um, if you apply this to the applicant's nineteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight square foot lot, this leaves you with five, a maximum of five point seven three units, basically. Not a... If we adopt the same standard that applies to my client's property, and again, he'd tell you it's too dense. He's got too much stuff there. He bought it, it was already constructed. That would leave you with seven point five two units. Uh, the plan for him, from his perspective, he has no problem with it, uh, limiting to the RC zone requirements as to density, which would leave you with five, basically, five units. And in fact, if a variance were sought to bring it to six, he'd have no issue with it then either. The problem is this, if you look at the application, if you look at the plot plan, there's virtually no, there, there's no computation of green space, but there's basically, if, you can make your own estimate on this, less than twenty percent green space. The property is proposed to be constructed within ten feet of the lot line. It lies on the lot line for most of the length of the property, including, uh, a good portion of it abutting my client's property. There are balconies shown on the plan. The balconies would, would impose into the side yard setback, the ten-foot setback. Now, why is that important? Why does he care? He recognizes it's going to be residential use for this property. That's what it should be. But basically, that interferes. You're putting, if the plan is adopted as proposed, you're putting a thirty-five-foot-tall building on the property line, intruding into that space next door. You're putting cars, people don't park in garages. The plan includes a provision that, that tenants park in the garage. That's part of their parking calculation. No one parks in their garage. Wintertime, sure, but I mean, if you're going out in the morning to, uh, get a cup of coffee, and you're coming back, and you know you're taking your kids out to, uh, baseball practice in an hour, you're not going to pull the car into the garage. It's going to create a nightmare there. It's going to, basically, if eight units are accepted, it's going to push traffic out onto Lock Street. It's going to create a problem.
Excuse me, the time, the timer has gone off?
Can I have one more minute, just to, I guess, one more second?
Quickly.
I'll wrap it up then. We say it's too high, there's no green space, there's intrusion into the setbacks, there are wetland issues with respect to the property. So, we respectfully support the plan if it consisted of even, even six units, but eight is just too much for the parcel. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, excuse me, Mr. Carrier.
What was, uh, if you had given it, I didn't pick up on it, but what is the square footage density calculation for your client's property?
For my clients? Yes, sir. If I could just have a moment, I can come up with that. We did the calculation, and it works to be two thousand, six hundred and fifty-six square feet per unit.
Two thousand, six hundred and fifty-six, sorry. And how many units are? And how many units are on your client's property?
He has 16 units.
16 units, okay. And how tall is his building?
His is two-story.
Two-story. Is that 31 feet? I'm just going to throw that out.
No, sir. I think it's, do you know how high your building is?
24.
It's about 24. It's a typical, if you looked at it, there's a house in the front that was made when the property was converted. The roofline is consistent with the two-story house that's in the front of the property that was tied in basically to the other units in 1976 when this was all done.
Okay. And does your client's property have, I'm not sure, is this top picture, is this taken from the lot that's proposed under development, looking at your client's?
No, sir. That's my client's property. If you look from the back corner of the property, that illustrates, and I didn't have time to come back to the pictures, but basically, that shows you the communal space back there. Again, it's not a beautiful picture right now because it's the dead of winter and we've got the snow melting, but it's a nice lawn area. It's where all of his tenants basically have communal space.
Okay. And so this building, that's not your client's, that's two units over?
Yes, sir. That is basically, it's, it's, it's two over on the other side, yes. And you can see there's a fence there. You can see the fence very faintly there. The fence is the boundary line. So the property, the proposed construction would come within 10 feet of that line.
Okay. All right. That answers my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question. My name is Jamie Rogers, and I'm on Zoom.
Are you wanting to speak in favor, in opposition?
I, uh... Um, I'm not necessarily in favor or in opposition.
Okay, well, then, what?
Yeah, this is the right time.
This is the right time.
Unless somebody else in the audience, unless you have somebody else in the audience.
Unless somebody else in the audience wants, right, I, there doesn't seem to be anybody here present who wants to speak in favor or, I think we're at opposition at this point in questions.
She can ask.
Yeah, so go ahead.
Yes, go ahead, Jamie.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jamie Rogers, and I am a homeowner at 4 Sapphire Lane, which is the new, the most recent line of completed condos that the LaFavor Folio Construction Company has built. And it abuts the property that's being discussed about tonight. My condo looks out onto the property where this, the new proposed eight units would be built, or however many units are approved. And I just have a question because it's not reflected in the documents that were provided with the agenda tonight, but there is a row of trees in between the newly-constructed condos and where the eight condos that are proposed to be built, between those two property lines. The trees are, I don't know how old, but they must be very old because the condo I'm in is three stories and it, the trees are maybe 30 feet higher than this condo. They're beautiful. They fill out in leaves that offer a significant amount of privacy for all of the new condos. And it's not clear from the drawings to me whether this entire line of trees, which runs the length of the property line, whether these will need to be cut down in order to build the new row of condos that LaFavor Folio is proposing. I assume, yes, because of how narrow the property is that these condos would be built on, but I'm curious to know whether, whether that has been decided and just raise it as something that could potentially impact the value of the existing condos by reducing our privacy and our, you know, quiet enjoyment of the properties that we just purchased.
I'm going to re-refer these questions in response to the original attorney, Attorney Pearlman.
Madam Chair, Andy Pearlman, for the record. If we could have Tom Zajak answer a couple of these questions, as well as points raised by Mr. Major's client.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record. My name is Tom Zajak, a civil engineer with Heiner Swanson, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua, here tonight representing the applicant. Would just like to speak to a couple of the points brought up. I've got some notes about parking, open space, setback, and trees. So as Attorney Pearlman mentioned, you know, we've been fortunate to do a couple of projects along this stretch of Lock Street. There's a 93, at 93 Lock Street, there's a five-unit project there, as well as 111, 113 Lock Street, which is the project being referenced. In terms of parking, this project here, we're representing 15 parking spaces, which is the maximum that's allowed by code, which is 1.9 spaces per unit on site. Each unit, as contemplated, would be similar to the 111, 113 Lock Street, in which you would have, it's a three-story structure. On the lower level, you would have a single-car garage along with an entryway that would lead up to the second floor, where there would be the first floor of living, and then above that, a second floor of living. So it's a rather compact unit. As Attorney Pearlman mentioned, there's all shapes and sizes in terms of units and housing needed to address the need in the community. And so we think that this is a good solution for this location. So again, parking, we're providing the maximum allowed. I will say on those other two projects that we did request the planning board to fully push to two spaces per unit, which we had to ask for a waiver from the planning. I would say that the concept plan shows that the site can support parking in accordance with the regulation. We will, we will speak to the planning board in terms of the parking issue for the site. Open space, we're providing 26%, as shown on the plan. We're 10% is required by zone. Setbacks, there was a talk about encroaching on setbacks. All the buildings are inside the setbacks for this zone and are kind of consistent in terms of where those buildings are located along the street. You know, in this area, the buildings are fairly close up to the street, so we meet setbacks. There was discussion about balconies. As Mr. Fox and Ms. Poirier know, that there are various circumstances where you can encroach, minor encroachments into setbacks for balconies, decks, porches, and so certainly, anything proposed would comply with that. For instance, if a deck is less than four feet, then it would be allowed within that setback. So certainly, the plan would fully comply with those setbacks. As Attorney Pearlman mentioned, you know, we're before you with a plan here. It certainly needs some more work and some engineering. Hopefully, we are granted your approval here tonight, and we can continue on in that process, which is going before the planning board. It is correct that there are a number of big, mature trees that straddle that property line. It was an item that was discussed with the planning board during that 111, 113 Lock Street meeting. We were able to save a majority of those trees by limbing some of them and pruning some of them, and we'll do the same here. It is very tight, so I can't say that all those trees will remain, but we'll certainly work to try to keep those in place as best we can. So yeah, parking, open space, setbacks, trees, I think that's what I had in my notes. Thank you.
Thank, Mr. Carrier.
You had mentioned that the minimum zone open space was 10%. I think you had 21%.
26.
26. Was it 10%? Was that for the GI zone or the RC zone?
Correct, the GI zone, yep.
What is it for the RC zone? Just curious.
I want to say 50%? 35, thank you, Kate.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
No further questions now. One and only one, Jamie, this would concern you because you had questions. And for the attorney present, who also presented the case, who could come back with a response. Were your questions answered?
Yes, my, this is Jamie Rogers again. Yes, my question was answered, and I appreciate that they would be willing to save as many trees as possible in the construction, and that's being taken under consideration.
Thank you. And because it's difficult to have both people talk, one via Zoom, one present, please again, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian Major, 19 Technology Way. I'm representing Smart Investments LLC again.
And Attorney Major, you have just a couple of minutes to respond.
I'll have one response, ma'am. I'll basically say, we've agreed with the applicant, this shouldn't be an industrial property. It should be residential. But if you're going to do that, if you're going to make this part of the RC zone effectively, then the RC zone requirements with respect to green space should apply, not the 10% that's in the industrial zone. That's my only response, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Attorney Pearlman.
No, 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 no. Sorry. It's just a point of order, just very quickly, I promise.
Do you want to take, let's make a motion to hear it then, because I don't want to...
Okay, fine. I mean, it's...
I'll make a motion to our attorney Pearlman to testify regarding a point of order.
And I'll second it, or no, Mr. Boucher, you can second it. I saw your hand. Mr. Carrier.
If we're taking a vote, I vote in favor of the motion.
Yes. Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher.
Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ann McKay, I also vote in favor. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fox may have a proposed condition of approval, if the board is so inclined to approve this, with which we agree, having to do with pictures of the property.
Could you...
Can Mr. Fox, yeah?
The house that's there now is an older house, an older brick house, and all we would like is some pictures of the exterior from all different elevations and also pictures of the interior of all the rooms. It's an old historical house, and we have a staff member who is very interested in historical preservation. This is not in historic district boundaries, but we would like, you know, should the board approve this, a stipulation made, we just have some pictures. Should be a very easy thing for them to do. They've agreed to do it. We would just like some pictures inside and outside of the property. That's it.
And we're happy to oblige. That's all. So thank you for allowing me.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher.
I'm generally in favor of the application. The abutters representative makes some valid points. I think that, in my mind, that, as noted by the applicant, that they may have to rework this plan. So, and I think that at the planning board stage, there may be more work to be done to get there before they get there. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, in general, I am in support of the application. I don't see any reason why I would deny the application unless another board member has something relevant that would make me change my mind. But I hear what the, both the abutters, you know, that live, one abutter lives there and the other abutter makes. But again, I think that this fits into that area. Noted again, this zone is not being used as a general industrial zone. And again, there are several multifamily units in the area. So in general, I'll support the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mincara.
So in general, I'm supportive with the caveat. Overall, in terms of the density, it really is less dense than the property, the development that was already approved to the west. It's a little denser than the property that exists to the right. It's kind of in between. So the general density doesn't bother me. What does give me a little pause, though, is that in order to achieve that density, you do have to maximize use of the site to a significant extent. And in particular, you have to intrude on that wetland buffer. And that's where I'm having pause of approving a variance for a density that, in essence, necessitates violating another provision of the zoning ordinance in order to get there. So I'd be happy to hear what anybody else thinks on that point, but that's what gives me pause. And that's what would incline me to think if you went with six units, my eyeballing it is you could avoid that impact entirely, maybe seven, but certainly not eight.
Thank you. Mr. Neely.
I have no expectation that any general industrial business has any interest in occupying this area. And we certainly can see that that whole area has become much more residential. We know we have a pressing need for housing. We have a very unique ability to see what this basically is going to look like, looking at its neighbor property here and seeing how it fits in. When, I'm sure we did our drive-bys and walk-bys, we could easily imagine how it was going to look. I am concerned about the wetland buffer, very concerned about that. I think you are going to have to tweak things a little bit to make it fit, but in general, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'd like, as far as the GI and residential treatment, I concur, and especially, I mean, Mr. Fox didn't even provide the exhaustive list, but you know, he noted in his report, permitted uses are things like manufacturing, contractor shops, laundry dry cleaning plants, machine shops, recycling, R&amp;D centers, R&amp;D offices. That was the only one that even to me seemed like somebody might feel okay about coming into a residential neighborhood. So I think residential use makes total sense. I guess my, my biggest concern, and I might be struggling even more than what my colleagues thus far have spoken to, is the, I guess, kind of like the treatment, like, yes, this should be treated much more like the fact that it's more like the neighboring RC zone, yet the setbacks for the entire project, the dense, the open space requirement, all those things being proposed, I get why the FK's doing it, are meeting the GI criteria, but essentially being asked to handle this lot as if it were already in the RC zone. And so, and I have concerns then that even though, yes, there are these other, including very recently-approved higher-density usages, I'm not so keen on going and putting yet again another intensively in dense use on this site because it can kind of meet the GI criteria in one sense and the neighboring, but wouldn't meet the RC zone like it's supposed to be mirroring that's adjacent. So I would really feel much more comfortable if we have an application that is much more closely adhering to the RC zone in all aspects, setbacks, open space, et cetera. Might not have to be all, especially with some consideration for some of the more higher-dense usages like are nearby. But I guess I really don't think I could support the application as presented for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Carrier.
Well, in terms of the RC versus general industrial, I'm on board with this, this is more an RC, you know, north of the river. To me, it's like an RC zone versus general industrial. I'm completely on board with that. From a walk-around, it looks equivalent density to what's on the left and to the right of it, you know, so I'm down with that. But I do get some pause on the, as Mr. Shaw was speaking to about, you know, adhering to the GI requirements versus the RC requirements. And to what Mr. Mincara points out, and I have the same struggle with, which is, you know, approving a variance, which then requires asphalt into a decent portion of the Nashua River buffer. Here it is, 2023, we've had wetlands laws for decades now. So yeah, there's other properties in this area along the Nashua River, like BAE, that are right up to the river, you know, that were built two centuries ago. But I'm feeling like it's, I guess, a little much, but I don't know, it's not like I could say, well, seven units would take care of that problem. I guess I don't have anything to... I guess I don't have anything to compare it to as to what would, say, alleviate, I guess I also can envision if the R C zoning requirements are met, what ends up? Is the project null and void, or is it one unit less or two units less? I don't know. So I do struggle with what Mr. Shaw was saying, is, you know, it's, we're thinking it's an R C zone, but it seems to be all G I, you know, setbacks, it's being adhered to, and I guess that's where I'm at at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, again, you know, I'm also in support of use as residential. I'm not quite so taken with requiring that all of the R C zone requirements be met, you know, looking at, in particular, this Sapphire Lane development, it looks like it doesn't, wouldn't meet the R C zone setbacks to the side property line, at least based on what I can see here. And, you know, green space, it could certainly use some more, but I think it has adequate for that area and for what's there. I do have a concern with extending the driveway into the wetlands buffer, and would not want to see that happen, so, you know, if I had my druthers, I would want to shrink the project down to maybe six units so that it would not impact the wetlands buffer.
Thank you. For myself, I think, Mr. Shaw, you said it best, you encapsulated a lot of my thoughts. It's, we're being asked to look at a picture that's square, but we need to use the round criteria to fit into that square, and it is a little bit confusing. I agree with Mr. Minkara, I agree with Mr. Lionel, Mr. Carrier, everyone, Mr. Boucher, you've all brought points forward about the density, about encroaching in wetlands, about the open space, about it's residential, not general industrial. We have to pick one solid criteria to use, and we need to go with that, my logical thought processes are telling me, but what we're trying to do is to utilize two sets of criteria to explain and rationalize out a project, and I don't know that either we can or how we're going to work that out. I honestly don't know, I'm just, I think, as confused as the rest, but if it was a smaller project and we didn't encroach in the wetlands and we had the wider open space, we wouldn't have the issues that we're all facing right now, and they were mentioned by everyone on the board. Mr. Boucher?
I agree with everybody's said so far. I think the way I'm looking at it is that this project, no matter if it's four units, six units, eight units, it's going to be lined up the same way it's lined up. So, I believe that, you know, again, I appreciate the idea about the requirements for the R C zone, but it's in the G I zone, and so I think no matter where the building ends up, we may end up a little more green space if it was less units. So going forward, I look at the application as, what are we approving? And again, I know that we see a plan that, and I saw it, you know, in the wetland buffer, but there's no, this application is not for encroachment into wetland buffer, and I think the applicant representative's clearly stated that, that that would be a separate thing that would have to come in front of us if that was the case, that doesn't mean we approve it. So I think, again, if we were to approve eight units, they still have to meet certain parking criteria, correct? If I understand correctly? So if there is no, if there's no approval of going into the wetland buffer, I think that like the applicant said, they have no choice but to shrink the project, or not do the project at all, right? So, again, I'm looking at this as approving eight units, that's what's, they, you know, they have this original design, but it's not necessarily, I look at it as I'm approving eight units, but again, if they want to only build, if they can only build seven, they can only build six, that's what it ends up being. I think, again, there's an ambition that this is what they're shooting for, but I don't think that they are one hundred percent thinking that it's going to, you know, happen, it may not, I think that was an admission, so, guess getting back to what I'm saying is, I know that if we approved eight units, I think in the process, the way the process works, it doesn't necessarily mean that eight units would happen, and if less units happen, that doesn't void necessarily, doesn't void our decision, if I understand that correctly. So again, I'm looking at this just as the application, we're asking for eight units, we see the plan, again, if they can't get the pack in, if they don't get any further approvals, then they can't put in the eight units.
Mr. Carrier?
A thought I have is that I, I'm not sure what the ask is, if the board, if the board is asking, like, what's the result if we adhere to R C setbacks? I have no idea what the result of that is, as I said, I could probably calculate, it's not my job, but a thought I have is, the applicant's been following along, I think, with two struggles, maybe I could try to encapsulate. One is, is there any movement for setbacks or open space and the incursion into the wetland? I think that's maybe two hangups I'm hearing. Certainly, I was hung up more on the paving into the wetland versus the setbacks, but the idea of not paving into the wetland, right, it might be absurd, because it's a lousy wetland and there's no benefit, or it might be brilliant, because we're otherwise approving a plan that's clearly in front of us going to require, you know, another variance, and I feel that's counter to what we grant variances for, if that's the case. So a thought I have is perhaps a table to, maybe two weeks out, or four weeks, for the applicant to address the concerns that this board has, and perhaps a response would be, no delta, perhaps a response would be, the reasons that we have pause, or most of us have pause, are not good for this or that, or maybe they can be addressed with some minor modifications, I don't know. So I throw the idea of a table to review any movement with either the setbacks to R C or non-incursion into the wetland buffer, and then the board takes its deliberation from there.
Mr. Minkara?
Yeah, I think the R C issue is somewhat of a red herring. This is, you know, this is a G I zone, they're not asking, you know, what's being asked of this board is not to rezone this property R C. There may be a myriad of R C requirements that do or do not, this property does or does not meet, so, to me, whatever R C requirements are, are nothing more than a point of comparison that was brought up, you know, by the abutter's attorney as a means of comparing open space, I think that's a valid point, of comparing density, I think it's a valid point, but at least to me, whether or not it meets other R C requirements, I don't think matters, they can't ask for variances from R C because it's not in the R C zone, they can only ask for variances from the G I zone, which is what they've done, so, to me, that's not an issue. You know, I'll just repeat what I said earlier, I think that it's, the issue is the unit count. I mean, that's really what it comes down to, if you reduce the number of units, you increase the open space, almost certainly you'd meet, to the extent that that matters, you'd meet the R C requirement at that point. To me, the issue just comes down to, we have right in front of us now a plan that does not meet another provision of our zoning, and that's the wetland buffer, and it's troublesome to me to be asked to approve a plan that doesn't meet zoning when they're not seeking relief from that. If they were seeking relief also from the intrusion into the buffer, I could say, sure, but to present us with a plan that, it would be the same thing as if it didn't meet other setbacks, and we'd say, well, yeah, we'll approve your building, it doesn't meet setbacks, but you'll just have to come back another day. That's, to me, that's the issue that gives me pause. Reducing the density, you know, I think addresses the neighbor's concern, I think it addresses the open space concern, and addresses the intrusion, and whatever else R C says, I don't really care. But I'm going to put it.
But you bring up valid points, Mr.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah, thank you.
Value nonetheless.
I'll argue that I don't think it's a red herring, but I don't know that I need to belabor that point. I just think it's important to consider the property more like an R C when the property is being asked to be developed as a nod to the R C that's adjacent to this, and so, to me, to ask to put a bunch of housing in a G I zone where housing is not allowed is already a big ask. We understand why, and I think the board totally agrees, it's not very practical at this point in time to ask them to be forced to have G I type of use there. However, the closest thing we have is the adjacent R C zone as far as how to treat it residentially. But the other thing that does bother me further than anybody's noted directly at least, is it also shows the dumpster at the farthest encroachment down into the wetland buffer. So like, in some ways, to me, of all things to kind of have in that buffer, and I realize, you know, you can have kind of the curbing and everything else, and theoretically, it should be fine, I also know the way things blow around and things get set next to dumpsters and whatever, it just doesn't feel good, so, so that part of it just, I feel like is almost just one more, like, yeah, it's bad enough, this is going on, but it's also got the dumpster there, so, I just wanted to highlight that to the rest of you, if you needed any further reason not to feel comfortable about it.
So then, based on, I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Carrier's suggestion of a tabling motion seems to be the one that would afford the board the understanding and ease of mind to approve something that actually would not require us disproving or going against one of our own regulations. That's a little difficult. Mr. Shaw?
The only thing I'd like to do is I would like to ask the applicant if they're interested in that, because if they just want us to act on the application tonight.
On what we have.
And have no interest in having us delay for, no interest in doing anything different, then I don't think we should, but otherwise, I think we should just at least give the applicant a chance to let us know.
So we need to have a vote to reopen the public hearing for this?
I think we've typically just done a direct ask like this.
Honestly, we can, and this goes back to the conference where the attorney spoke, you can just let somebody come up and speak, you absolutely can. Attorney Perlman, the chair actually has that authority to do so. Attorney Perlman?
And I wouldn't mess with a chair. We have no objection to table the application.
Thank you very much, so that.
Can I ask one clarif?
Sure.
Is the two weeks, proposed two weeks, good, sufficient, or would you prefer four weeks?
No, April 11th would be fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then, if this meets with everyone's approval, Mr. Shaw, I think I hear a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on behalf of, well, I guess, do we need to, I guess I'd need to read the whole thing for us to do the table motion, just so we, I mean, usually we read the whole application, right? On behalf of owners Ronald and Estelle Hudon, applicant in favor, Folio LLC at 115 Locke Street, requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 15, to remove existing building and construct one eight-unit multifamily building along with associated site improvements, and this is in the G I zone. The motion is to table this application into the next meeting, which is April 11th, to give the applicant an opportunity to address some of the concerns that this board has raised in our deliberations regarding aspects of the proposal that shows some usage into the wetland buffer and any possible relationship of some of the R C criteria. So again, I move to table until the April 11th meeting.
And I will second that, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote in favor of the tabling motion. We will see you, gentlemen, back two weeks from today, on April 11th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to take two minutes.
Absolutely. We are in recess for five minutes, four minutes. We are in recess for five minutes, four minutes. I'd like to call the meeting back to order and read into the record case number three. The Bowman Family Revocable Trust, Robert and Candy Bowman, trustees, owners, Robert Bowman, applicant, 31 Orchard Avenue, sheet 118, lot 27. Requesting variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach 13 feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback on Orchard Avenue to replace an existing front porch with new eight-by-21-roofed farmer's porch. This is in the RA zone, Ward 7. If you would please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Robert Bowman, 31 Orchard Ave, Nashua. As she mentioned, looking to put a farmer's porch on the front of our home at 31 Orchard. The reason, one of the reasons being is the kitchen area is very small. We are looking to renovate that. In doing that, we would be removing one of the two doors, access doors to the outside that access the driveway so we can extend our kitchen to be a little more accessible, if you would. We have about five feet of counter space, so we'd like to obviously make that a lot larger and tear down a wall. I believe I added the plans for the, for the addition, for the renovation on the, in the house. I just believe this, this would make the house more valuable, the addition, and it would be in the concept of the neighborhood with other porches that are on the houses in the, in the neighborhood. My first time here, so.
That's okay. We all had our first time here. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Courier.
Yeah, just trying to clarify, like this picture, I think, you know, is your house kind of like from the driveway?
Correct.
And with your proposed kitchen renovations, were you saying like this, this door on this side was proposed to go away?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I didn't get that from the application, but that's what I thought I heard you say. And, and so that's, I think, led to you providing the sketch of your application. Because, okay, so where it says exterior door here, you're proposing that that would be removed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Got it. I didn't, I didn't catch that before.
The.
So just to follow through on your argument, you know, with your proposed kitchen enlargement, the door, that door would go away.
Yes, sir.
And, and you were looking to have, say, easier access without that door to your driveway so you could walk across the farmer's porch?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. I just, I got it. That was my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Yes, sir, Mr. Neely.
So thank you for bringing up that point, Mr. Courier. I had the, the same question. I certainly know we did our drive-by and, and we saw your application and said, hey, I don't want to walk up into the street in order to get to my car, and we're looking at a door right next to where your car is parked.
Yes.
It rang a bit hollow. I'll, I'll be honest with you. So thank you for that, for that. That being said, a couple of questions for you. When we drive up and down Orchard, it looks like your house is already closest to the street.
It is. It is. It was built before the setbacks.
Yeah, of course. No, I, I get that. And, and as we looked at, at some of the pictures you provided of some of the houses with the farmer's porches, most of them had them recessed into the house. By that, by that, I mean they're not really sticking out in the front of the house. Did you make any consideration of maybe just wrapping it instead of having a full farmer's porch out front? Maybe wrap it around the side a little bit so you'd have, on the side opposite your driveway? So you'd have that same amount of ability to stretch out and have chairs and still get the same view without really infringing towards the street?
Well, the reason for the porch would be to have an entrance to the house from the driveway through the porch. In other words, there'll be a, on the end of the porch, there'll be stairs going down to the driveway so we don't have to walk around into. But I never thought about wrapping around the other side of the, the home.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in support of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, so there is nobody on Zoom. Is there anybody here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, and there's no one on Zoom, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Minkara.
I, I support the application. You know, I do hear the point, if you wanted more, you know, kind of outdoor usage space, you could, you could go on the side. But I, I see the reason for wanting to connect to the driveway. Eight feet isn't excessively deep. So it, it strikes me as a reasonable use. And I would just also note that the house at 29 seems to be at least closer to Orchard than, than this house. So it's not significant of intrusion.
Thank you. Mr. Neely.
My initial inclination, having read the application and, and driving by the property, was that, that we really should not move forward with this. However, having heard the, the testimony of the applicant and understanding now that they're, they're getting rid of that side door and doing a major house renovation inside, for safety purposes, I also prefer they not have to go into the street to get to their car. We certainly have used safety in many of the, the past cases that we've discussed issues such as this. This house is also located at the end of the street. So it really, you'd have to be traveling all the way up that street in order to see it. I don't think it's going to be out of character to the neighborhood. So, so for those reasons, I do, I, I lean in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm in support. And I think, I think especially what's most compelling to me in a lot of regards is the fact that the house is just set so far forward on the lot. And, you know, it's kind of one of those, it's a shame because it's a huge lot otherwise, but just, yeah. And I, I think there's, there's no detriment that I can see by allowing this, this extra encroachment.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
Yes, overall, I'm in support, and I was, Mr. Shaw's captured my thought. And to me, this graphic says it all. I mean, if this, I mean, to me, it screams of a very old house of which maybe setbacks weren't consideration, or maybe it was the only one in the neighborhood way back then as things got parceled out. But like, if you were, if you had this lot and you were building a house on it, I don't think you'd ever end up in the front right, left, right or left corner or whatever as it is. And, but it's probably been like this for generations, and that, I think, is a special condition of the land. And I, I just wanted to reiterate that it seemed that a house next to it was as close or closer to the street where this wouldn't be sticking out like a sore thumb. You know, of course, the houses across the street are set further back, but it didn't look like it would make it look out of place. So with, with that and the understanding of the renovation and trying to fit into that, I'm, I feel it meets criteria.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
I'm in support of the application. I don't have anything to add to what my colleagues have said.
Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application for all the reasons spoken to.
And I too also support the application for all of the aforementioned reasons. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for the Bowman Family Revocable Trust, Robert and Candy Bowman, trustees, owners, Robert Bowman, applicant, 31 Orchard Ave, sheet 118, lot 27, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach 13 feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback on Orchard Avenue to replace an existing front porch with a new eight-foot by 21-foot roofed farmer's porch. It's in the RA zone, Ward 7. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given it's a special condition of property. Again, as spoken to, the home is situated in the front right corner of the property. And again, house was built predating zoning ordinances. And we find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will inadvertently affect property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interests, and we also find it substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, thank you for your second. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier.
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ann McKay, I also vote in favor. That is five to nothing. That's unanimous. And so congratulations. You have gotten your variance. It's been granted. And as we've state all evening, anyone has the option to appeal any decision that this board makes. They have 30 days in which to do so. Should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Forrier, and they will help you. Again, thank you for your presentation. Congratulations on your variance approval. And the final case. Good night. Larry W. Kittle, owner, Alpha Contracting Services Incorporated, care of Helton Rodriguez, applicant, 58 Chandler Street, sheet 42, lot 254, requesting variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3 for minimum land area, 5,520 square feet existing, 6,970 square feet required to construct a two-family structure where a 6/22/2021 ZBA approval for lot width was granted for approval of a single-family home. This is in the RC zone in Ward 3. Is there someone here to present this application? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Nathan Chamberlain with Fieldstone Land Consultants. I'm here with Larry Kittle and Hector Rodriguez, as stated.
Your address, sir.
It is 206 Elm Street, Milford, New Hampshire.
Thank you. We need that for the record.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. So we're here for a variance to allow a two-family to be constructed where the lot area only allows for a single-family based on 190-16B. And the reason we're asking for this variance is if you look at the street, there's only really one single-family home on the street, possibly two. And that is the house that the subdivision was done, I think in 2021, and created a lot that the width variance was granted on. And the rest are, you know, either duplexes or quadplexes or triple, you know, trial levels, triple deckers. So we feel that this is in the spirit of the, the neighborhood, and the, the proposed house will be constructed in the same footprint that was presented when the subdivision was done. And, you know, the planning department asked for calculations and whatnot as far as drainage. So that, that will all remain the same. And it's really not going to be your standard duplex. It's going to be one unit on the bottom floor and one unit on the second floor. But it'll be in the same footprint that was already presented during the subdivision process. As far as the, the points for the variance, granting of the requested variance will not be contrary to public interest. Essentially based on what I just said, the surrounding area is multifamily in the form of duplexes, quadplexes, and triple deckers with multiple units within them. And this will be, will fit into the neighborhood nicely, we believe. And as was shown on the zoning exhibit, it's not really clear, but there's little text below each buzzer saying, you know, what type of use it is. The one that kind of kitty-corner across the street, it just says residentially, that is a duplex. The, the three on the end there, I guess that's heading south, are all duplexes. The one kind of across the street from the single-family, it looks like it used to be a duplex, but now someone closed it back to one, I'm not sure. But then the rest are all quadplexes or larger. The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. Essentially, that's the same, you know, same argument that the duplex structure. The proposal consists of a duplex structure on the parcel. The proposal is consistent with the surrounding properties and will thereby observe the spirit of the ordinance. The proposed development will be in harmony with the neighborhood and will not threaten the public health, safety, welfare, and otherwise injure the public rights. Number three, substantial justice would be done to the property owner if granting the variance. Granting this variance would allow the property owner to develop the subject parcel in, into a property in harmony with the surroundings and market the property as two units. This proposal will not cause harm to the general public or other individuals, and therefore substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting this variance. This proposal would be in harmony with the surrounding properties. And then number four, the proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding properties because this proposal, this proposed use is consistent with and compatible with the surrounding uses and will therefore not diminish the surrounding property values. New construction typically has a positive impact on the adjacent land values. Given this, we believe the proposal should actually provide, provide, oh, have positive impacts on the surrounding property values. And finally, special conditions exist that literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. The zoning zip plan attached to this application shows the surrounding densities in proximity to the proposed parcels. When you review this plan, you will see that this proposal is consistent with the surroundings and will therefore not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Literal enforcement, literal enforcement of the ordinance would restrict our client's ability to develop the property in harmony with its surroundings and result in unnecessary hardship. When we evaluated the surrounding uses and densities, we found this proposal to be fair and reasonable. So that's essentially what we're looking for is to, you know, the subdivision's done. The area allotted is not quite, is slightly below what is required for a two-family. And so we're looking for relief on that, that depth, that area that's in that table. So, questions?
Mr. Lionel.
So two years ago, your client, I don't know if it was you in particular, but your client came before us and was, was asking for the lot subdivision. And it was very clear that the request was for a single-family home. And we granted it for a single-family home. And the reasoning given by various board members stated that it was acceptable to them because it was a single-family home. Now, two years later, say, oops, well, no, maybe we want a two-family home there. And that bothers you. Can you tell me why they didn't just ask for a two-family home back in 2021?
Well, it's, you know, the, we have the property owner, and he, he purchased the parcel. He was doing a flip on the existing single-family home, basically renovating and then reselling it. And he wanted to market this parcel separately. He'd do, do the subdivision within his rights to do that subdivision. And, you know, at that time, the buyer was not known. So now we have a buyer, and the buyer's preference, Alpha Contracting, is to do a two-family. So we're here asking for relief to be able to do the two-family on this parcel. It's the same footprint as what was previously, was presented previously. It's just on, instead of having two floors of a single-family, you have a floor each. So it's two units instead of one.
Thank you.
Mr. Neely. Then Mr. Courier.
Can we expect that this property's going to have off-street parking?
There is, there is a driveway that would accommodate at least two vehicles. I'm not sure, but yes, it would be off-street parking for the other two.
I'm sure you, you've been down to that area, and there's quite a bit of on-street parking already. So we certainly are not looking to add to that. So we certainly are not looking to add to that, to that burden.
Right.
Mr. Carrier?
Well, I guess I was going to ask about the parking. Not that the inherent parking, you know, is primary to our, you know, how that's designed, but I was curious with the larger portion of the lot in the back, just what the idea was for off-street parking. Am I hearing like one single driveway or a dual-wide driveway?
Yeah, dual-wide driveway to the front, accommodating two vehicles.
The home would be behind that?
Yes. There's, there's not enough space to fit a driveway to the back.
Okay. And then I guess I, I, I struggle as Mr. Lionel does because, I mean, just while I don't think anything's changed in that neighborhood, and I agree, there's, it's a mix because there's some multifamily units, but the presentation previously was that it was primarily single-family home. And I'll just read that the single-family home is consistent with the surrounding properties. And so I'm, I'm struggling with a presentation that was made to request relief for a single-family home by saying it was consistent with single-family homes in the neighborhood, and then a request for the two-family saying that's consistent with the neighborhood. But so I'm a little, I guess I'm hung on that, but I'm just, you know, that's where I'm at at the moment.
Understood.
That's all I have.
Mr. Boucher?
I know you may not have the exact plans for the home, but you know what's, what the applicant's going to propose? It's going to, is it going to be how many bedrooms per unit?
I do not. Two bedrooms per unit.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? And there is no one on Zoom, correct? Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, and again, there is no one on Zoom, so I'm going to close the public
If I just might, can I just add one thing briefly? I just wanted to say that, you know, we all know there's a housing shortage, and so this would add some relief to that. I know it's small, but I just want to make that point before we sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely?
Chandler Street is, is full of multi-unit buildings. In fact, we just heard a case on Chandler Street probably two months ago. When you go past this one individual lot, you know, while there is a single-family house there, it is in the shadow of a multi-story building right there. So this certainly is within the character of, of the neighborhood. In general, I'm, I'm in support. I do hear what the other board members are saying about, about this was presented two years ago as a single-family house, and why are we back here again to talk about, you know, a duplex? And I understand, you know, there's a new player here trying to buy this property and add, add an extra house there. So I, you know, I'll defer to the other board members to discuss that, but in general, I'm, I'm in favor, just because the character of this neighborhood is, is a heavy-density neighborhood already.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm struggling with it. I just, it's pretty much the point that was made about, you know, what was approved two years ago, the argument for then. And I guess I, it's still, still a moderately significant relief on the density requirement. So I guess I'd like to hear the rest of the board, but I'm not convinced yet whether to support this or not.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
Well, I guess I, I still struggle with the application. I mean, a couple of thoughts. I concur with Mr. Neely. It is a mixed neighborhood. And you have the argument, say, in favor of this, that, you know, there, you know, there's certainly some big multifamilies around, we're just adjudicating on one kind of close by, you know. And we spoke about one on Chandler just, just a meeting ago that was, you know, I think originally maybe part of the church or something. But I, you know, the, the overage is 79%, you know, or the, you know, how much is short is 79%. So I mean, it's not just like a little bit under. I feel that that's, that's an eye-opener. And I, and I, I do think with that property skinny down, it makes a two-family, the parking situation more challenging than a single-family where you have two different families with two different schedules versus the single-family. So, you know, with Chandler Street kind of being a cut through, and I find the speeds on it being kind of high, I, I'm struggling with, with the request, particularly when I was persuaded last time that it was more a single-family home than a multifamily home. I'm struggling with that. That's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, I'm also, well, actually, I'm not really struggling. I'm not in favor of this coming back to the well for additional relief when we were told two years ago, I was there, that this was going to be a single-family residence. Chandler Street is narrow and crowded, and yes, there are, it's a mixed-use neighborhood, but we approved the lot subdivision, the minimum frontage requirement based on being told that this was going to be for a single-family house. And for making it a duplex would add to the intensity of use and requires yet another variance for area. I'm inclined to not support it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Struggle a little bit. But again, I think I look at the neighborhood, and I, I think it's, again, predominantly multifamily. I, I think, and again, I don't have a plan in front of me, but, but looking at this property, I think biggest concern was, again, parking for me. And I think that the site's doable, again, to design, you know, and I'm not designing it for them, but again, Billy, maybe let's push back a little bit, that, that gives us a parking that's needed. And I, and I appreciate the fact that this is not like a side-by-side. This is, this is a more of a traditional, like, two-family apartment type of a building type thing. I guess in the end, I don't know if I can find, I don't know if I find enough to say that I wouldn't support the application considering what the neighborhood is. And I know, and I was here also when we, when we split this lot, when we approved this. But I also recognize that things do change over time, and we all have, you know, our own opinions about that. I guess at this point, I think if it's designed in a way to support that off-street parking that's, I think is required for that neighborhood, I don't know at this point whether or not, yeah, I don't, I just don't know. I think that I'm leaning towards supporting it.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
So I am struggling with this. If this were, you know, a freestanding lot that was coming to the board for the first time, and they proposed a duplex, I might be inclined to support it for the reasons that have been stated. It would be consistent with the density. But then I look at it and wonder, if this were coming as an initial application to subdivide this lot, to create, you know, relief to create the new lot, and a request for a variance for the density to allow a two-family, would, I've supported that out of the gate. And I guess that's where I struggle. I recall, you know, a case in, you know, in fact, in this, this neighborhood where that was the issue. They were splitting it, they also wanted to increase the density, and there was some pause around that. So I guess that, I guess that's where I'm struggling. And it's actually a struggle. I'm not sure. I don't have to vote on it, so I don't have to come down on it, right? But that, that's what gives me pause. And the other thing I would just like to have seen is to the, to the point about parking being a challenge on Chandler Street, I would have liked to have been able to see a plan that showed that they could in fact accommodate the parking without people having to park in the street. If it's tandem, that's not going to work, right? So how many spaces can you accommodate without tandem parking? Because it was alluded to in an earlier case, but the reality is that people are going to park on the street, and that's tough on Chandler. Not that that's make it or break it, but it would have been nice to have seen how they're going to accommodate that.
Well, I agree with my fellow board members. I struggle. And as far as parking, I can see cars on the front lawn because that happens. Chandler Street, on any given day, is seriously a drag strip. People go flying up that hill and then flying towards the stop sign, and there's always cars parked on either side, and you're just praying that nobody's coming in the opposite direction to you. Or if they do, you have room to slide over. It's, it's just a difficult, difficult decision. It's, the area looks like it would fit. However, do we want to fill the bucket so full that it overflows? I just don't know. And we don't have a plan as to Mr. Minkara's. And I think, Mr. Carrier, I think there's been a few people who have said we've just not seen anything. Mr. Shaw?
I think maybe where Mr. Minkara was going a few minutes ago, I think maybe helped sufficiently gel this for me because when we were deliberating on this case before, if there were, if the request was for a two-family for this second lot, I would have expected that there would have been, it would have been carved up differently so that they could have met that. Because there is additional area still in that remaining lot that could have been taken from, especially the back, you know. I know there's the argument about the house, but, you know, where the shed is in that back, it could have been, you know, almost like a flag lot in, you know, a different way to meet the actual density. And so to me, it's just, unfortunately, has that feel of, well, you know, we kind of asked for this relief, and now we're going to come back and ask for this relief, and I realize there's some change in ownership and all. But the general thing of what we were asked to do was already, you know, kind of like trying to do this thing to kind of make, get a second lot out of here. But we found sufficient comfort with, as a single-family. And now to have it as, you know, proposed for a third overall dwelling unit in this, from this original lot, I think it could have been done, if it had been done conceptually from the beginning. And I guess in that sense, it brings me to a point of not having the ability to support it, so.
Well, thank you. Mr. Carrier?
I just wanted to say that Mr. Minkara also captured my thoughts, thinking back when I was present on this case the first time. The single-family criteria was very persuasive in me approving that subdivision last time. And I, I remember now thinking, well, that, that, yeah, I think is a reasonable request, and I was pleased the board overall approved it and I was part of that. But I think I wouldn't have felt that comfortable then if it was for a subdivision and variance that's being asked for. So I've, because I've kind of gone from on the fence to not being able to support it during this conversation.
I think I can say the same thing. The clarity provided by yourself and Mr. Shaw, based on Mr. Minkara's comments, made it easier for me to be comfortable with, boy, I don't like this. It just doesn't fit. So is there any further discussion? Or would somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Larry Kittle. Applicant is Alpha Contracting Services, Inc., address 58 Chandler Street, sheet 42, lot 254. Requesting variance from land use code section 190-16, table 163 for a minimum land area, 5,520 square feet existing, 6,970 square feet required to construct a two-family structure where a June 22, 2021 ZBA approval for a lot width was granted for approval of a single-family home. This is in the RC zone, Ward 3. The board believes this variance was not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, that there are no special conditions of the property that were different from what they were in June of 2021, and the benefit sought by applicant could have been retrieved by some other method reasonably feasible to pursue other than this variance. The board does not find it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have no testimony about property values of surrounding parcels. We do note that there is mixed use in the neighborhood, but this already small lot would be even more intensive use than what's there now. And the board believes this, it would be contrary to public interest. Substantial justice would be served if we granted the variance, but given all of this, I make a motion to deny the area variance.
And thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes not, not in favor.
And myself, Marion McKay, I also vote in favor of the motion to deny. That was a four-to-one vote. The board has denied the request. Thank you for your presentation. Anyone has the option to appeal a decision made by this board? They have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the planning department. Thank you very much. With this is, there is no motion for a rehearing. Does anyone see any regional impact?
No.
No regional impact, and we have minutes from the February 28th meeting.
I didn't see any changes.
I didn't see any changes.
Mr. Minkara?
I just had a couple on page seven, and I'm turning to Mr. Neely on this. Kind of what, one, two, three, four, five lines up from the bottom. The sentence is, "He said that the board had a very long conversation about this, and the board clearly thought that the driveway should stay at 40 feet." I think you meant not, should not stay at 40 feet. You're correct.
That's on page seven?
On page seven, it's the second paragraph from the bottom, fifth line.
Oh, second paragraph.
It said where it ends with should, it should be should not. Normally I wouldn't have picked, but I felt that was substantive. And so then while I'm at it, the one, two, three, the fifth paragraph down from the top that starts with Mr. Minkara, just the very last, I think it's, should be an ED, presented, not present, nor was there anything unusual about it that was presented. Minor effect. That was it.
Thank you for checking that out for identifying that.
Any other edits to the minutes? Seeing none? Make a motion to approve?
Well, we have elections that we need to...
No, we haven't had to vote on the minutes.
Oh, yes, motion.
I thought I heard you said...
No, no, no. I said I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as edited. And Mr. Shaw, thank you for your second. Mr. Boucher? Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier.
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ann McKay, I also vote in favor. So that is five to nothing in favor of the edited minutes. Now, Mr. Lionel.
Well, not to me, but.
The board is all present and accounted for, which is a great thing, and yes, there are elections. Nominations, suggestions?
I, I guess I'll throw out that I am happy to serve on the board, but I am, I'd be happy to not serve in a position of authority, or, you know, one, one of the board members. But I'm, I'm, I'm open to anything. I just wanted to throw that out for myself. I think I will be not present for a couple, several meetings over the next several months, which, you know, so I probably would be removed. That option is still on the table. So I hope to be at all the meetings, but probably half of them in person. And I just, that, that's going to be my schedule for probably the next four or five months. That's just what I have to say.
I'll just mention it. I, I've been an officer for the last four years of various roles, and I, now I'm going to be traveling a lot over this next year internationally, so I wouldn't be able to attend the meetings even by Zoom. So I'm happy to let somebody else take the reins there.
I'm happy to serve in any capacity.
Are you interested in just continuing as chair? I think, you know, I'd be fine with that.
If that's, sure, if that's okay with everybody, it'll work for me.
And I don't know.
I just want to throw out that, you know, I've read some, it was in WN, not WM, or the union leader, there, you know, that, there's a little Thursday circulator that the residents of Nashville get, like, along with Mark Raskin and Shaw's. And so, you, you know, a lot of times, the news is a little bit more Manchester-focused, but that's fine, I find it interesting. But there was a blurb in there about how there was, I would call it an accusation, that zoning boards were not diverse enough. And, and I have to say that I, I think this board makes very objective, thought-out decisions in the current makeup, and we're always struggling for membership, but it makes me think, I, I'm kind of proud that we have a female chair, because it, it's a little bit of diversity there. So I do want to get that on the table, and, and I would certainly support Ms. McKay because she wants to do it, but also, for that reason, I think it throws a little diversity in, even though I don't think our decisions would be any different regardless of the makeup of the board. I just want to get that out there.
Well, thank you.
Interested in being vice chair?
You know, I'd be more than happy to, you know, I know it's not the best, it's not the, the favorite position, but I'd be more than happy to clerk if, if, to give Mr. Courier a break, if that's, because I think maybe he deserves it at this point. I mean, I've done it before, so it's not.
Unless you're happy to do it, which is, is fine, too. I don't think, I have no great desire. I've done it before, and, yeah, it's.
Because I know there's not going to be really any volunteers.
Maybe you've got it down so well in electronic these days.
Would you, would you be interested in being a vice chair?
I, I would do it just to, to fill the spot. I don't necessarily need or want to, but I would do it just, yeah, yeah, I'd be okay with it. Like, if you, if you want to, also, I really, we both probably have some travel.
I was going to say, it seems like a motion.
I think we all have travel-type things going on.
I figured, I figured that Mr. Shaw would not be interested in clerking, and I'm just kind of going to take that on, to give everybody a break. Okay? So I'd be more than happy to volunteer to clerk.
So do, I think we have a volunteer for chair, vice chair, and clerk.
You want a vice chair?
I, I, I'd prefer to not, unless it was really hurting.
Again, I think if, if, if Ms. McKay is not available, you're not here, I think you can still leave it.
We, any of us can cover it, yeah, so.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would fall on, wouldn't it fall on the clerk, his tertiary?
Actually, technically, it's the longest-serving member.
Yes.
This is how it goes.
I can't escape.
Yeah, yeah.
No, you can't. Because I think you, Mr. Shaw, the longest-serving, and then Mr. Boucher, then myself.
Well, I, I think we have a, a proposed slate, so I will make a, a motion for a proposed slate of Ms. McKay as chair, Mr. Shaw as vice chair, and Mr. Boucher as clerk.
Second.
Wow.
The words weren't out of my mouth, and the hand was up.
No, as fast as I have. Okay, then. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
I vote in favor. Mr. Neely and Mr. Minkara, how do you vote? I know it, but you're part of our board.
Well, you know, I, I probably speak for Mr. Minkara, saying that we are honored to serve this board as the, as the shortest-tenured person here. I honestly have been very impressed with this board from day one, A, how welcoming you were, but just the, the amount of knowledge, and, and we have had some interesting cases, and, and this group has done a good job navigating those, those waters, so I am, I am proud to say that I would support the nominations here.
Thank you.
And I agree, couldn't say it better.
Thank you, then, I guess. Thank you for everybody's willingness to serve. It was like watching a shell game. And if there is no further business to come before the board, it's eight forty-seven, and the meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Any others?